Good morning, welcome to the Supreme Court of the United Kingdom. Today we're hearing an appeal from the Court of Appeal of England and Wales in the matter of Ritson, Thomas and others against Oxfordshire County Council. The appeal raises the question whether titles of land which were donated to the council for use as a school under the Schools Sites Act 1841 reverted to the donor's estate when the school ceased to operate from the gifted land. I'm Lord Lloyd Jones, I'm sitting today with Lady Harden.
Good morning.
Lord Sales.
Good morning.
Lord Burrows.
Good morning.
And Lord Stephens.
Good morning.
The appellant, Oxfordshire County Council, is represented by Christopher McCall, Queen's Counsel, and Nigel Thomas. Respondents are represented by Simon Tauber, Queen's Counsel, and Matthew Smith. Mr. McCall.
My Lords, my Lady, this is a short but an important point of statutory construction. As your lordship has said, the Act is now nearly 200 years old, but there's been no judicial discussion of the point previously. And the surprising fact is that it could well come up in numerous cases under the Act, because the facts are very straightforward and commonplace. Decision in this case is highly unlikely to be distinguishable on facts in relation to any other similar case. There are supposed to be some, 2,000 in 1981, probably now 1,000 cases still outstanding under the Act, and this case will arise in any case where a school grows out of its premises and needs to move to a new one. My Lords, my Lady, the Act of 1841 was designed for three purposes: to facilitate, to encourage, and to support the creation of village primary schools for the poor. And it was aimed, of course, at the local landlord who might feel an obligation to assist. To facilitate the creation of such schools, there were provisions designed to cope with the strict settlement and entail, which were fashionable in those days, and the Act also avoided the need to see a licence in mortment. None of that matters today. To encourage the grants, the grantor was expressly made entitled to a right of reverter if the grant ceased, and I use neutral language, to serve its purpose. And to support the creation of such schools, there was a power of sale if the school had to move to more suitable premises. The facts couldn't be simpler, and it's enough to refer to the first instance judgment, I don't think I need to take your lordships to it, at pages core bundle 113 and 114. The respondents, some heirs of the late Robert Fleming, who gave in 1914, 1928, two parcels of land for the purposes of the Nettlebed Primary School. The Oxfordshire County Council, the educational authority, some 80 years later decided the school needed upgrading, and they devised a plan to build a new school on borrowed money. Then, after the new school had opened, they sold the bulk of the old school to deprive a large part of the borrow. And the plan was carried out over the period between 2005 and 2007. The children were transferred to the new site in February 2006, and the agreement for sale of the old site was on 1st of August 2007. The dispute is over some £1,250,000, which is the element of the presidio sale agreed to be attributable to the grant by Mr. Fleming. The respondents claim, it's quite simple, they are entitled to the benefit of the statutory reversion, they say, because the old school closed before the sale. They lost the first instance on what we say was a purpose of construction approach. They won in the Court of Appeal on what we say was a black letter approach. The appellants say that the respondent's approach would be to frustrate the purposes of the power expressly conferred by the Act to sell and re-site a school. The only rarely practical way of moving a school onto a better site is to build the new school, to move the pupils, to close the old school, and then to sell it. And that presupposes closing before sale. We say that it cannot have been intended that such arrangements would deprive the appallants of the value of the land sold. And the respondents say closure before the sale automatically brings reverter into immediate effect. I've said the point is of some considerable importance. There was a Law Commission Working Party report, to which I shall wish to refer the court, on the Act in 1981, and there were then said to be possibly some 2,000 sites where there were still schools set up pursuant to the Act. The number will, of course, have gone down. Possibly some have closed, possibly some have already gone down the route of replacement with a new site. But there will plainly be many where this is a licence. And, as I've said, the issue is very unlikely to be that specific. My Lords, my Lady, the 1841 Act, Section 2, is the first matter to which I would wish to refer to the court. It is in the authorities' bundle at, and I'm now hoping that the imagination is the same, AB Authority Bundle 463.
Yes.
I'm much relieved, my Lords. Section 2, landlords empowered to convey land to be used as sites for schools. Any person being seized in fee simple for life, of an enemy man or land to freehold, covenor, or custody attendant, having the beneficial interest therein, may grant, convey, or enfranchise by way of gift, sale, or exchange in fee simple for term of use, any quantity not exceeding one acre of such land as a site for a school for the education of four persons, or the residence of the schoolmaster or schoolmistress, or otherwise for the purposes of the education of such four persons in religious and useful knowledge, provided that no such grant made by any person seized for life, etc., shall be valid unless the person next entitled shall be a party to and join in such grant. So that's the basic power to grant. And then the crucial proviso, the reverter proviso, is provided always that upon the said land so granted as a forso, or any part thereof, ceasing to be used for the purposes in this Act mention, the same shall thereupon immediately revert to and become a portion of the said estate held in fee simple or otherwise, or of any man or land of forso, as fully and to all intents and purposes as if this Act had not been passed. Anything herein contained to the contrary notwithstanding. My Lords, there were numerous reported cases, mainly of the first 50 years of the 20th century, about how the reverter operated, for one reason above all else. Very often, the reverter, if it came into play, came into play a long time after the death of the grantor, and the grantees might well not be in touch with the heirs of the grantor. So the situation used to arise whereby the grantees as trustees would be in adverse possession as against those already entitled to a reverter. And the question then arose whether the trustees had been trespassers long enough to claim that they could set aside the reverter's entitlement. That was obviously an unintended result, and it was cured by Section 1 of the Reverter of Sites Act 1987. But I don't think I need to take your lordships, my Lady, to that provision, because there is no question of time in the present case. However, the 1987 Act did clarify the law about the power of sale under Section 14. And I must now take your lordships to Section 14, which is at page Authorities' Bundle 476. The trustees are empowered to sell or exchange land or buildings. When any land or building shall have been or shall be given or acquired under the provisions of the said first recited Act or this Act, we don't need to worry about the previous Act. Or shall be held in tract for the purposes of forso, and it shall be deemed advisable to sell or exchange the same for any other more convenient or eligible site. It should be lawful for the trustees in whom the legal estate in the said land or building shall be vested, by direction or with the consent of the manager or director of the school, if any such there be, to sell or exchange the said land or buildings or property for other land or building suitable to the purposes of their trust, and to receive on any exchange any sum of money by way of effecting any quality of exchange, to apply the money arising for such sale or given on such exchange in the purchase of another site or in the improvement of other premises used or to be used for the purposes of the trust. My Lords, my Lady, I take out of that the two references to the purposes of the trust, which will, in my submission, be of some relevance later on in my submissions. The 1987 Act, and I'm so sorry, the provisions of Section 14 and the provisions of Section 2 raised the question whether closure of the school before sale, before completion of the sale, was relevant for the purposes of the reverter provision, or whether it was a matter of closure before, after exchange, before, I'm so sorry, before exchange, and thus before completion. The 1987 Act made clear that closure after the exercise of the sale, the power of sale, put an end to the possibility of reverter. So you could properly exercise the power of sale and then go ahead, close and sell. The case against us is that closure before sale is fatal. And we submit that 1987 confirms that there is no difficulty if you close sale after exchange, since that Act came into force. But we say that until 1987, as we understand it, the respondent's argument presupposes that closure before completion would automatically deprive the trustees of their title to perfect the sale. And this would, of course, mean that the trustees could never sell after opening the school with the benefit of vacant possession. We say that the court should not accept such a construction unless there is no alternative. The court will wish to know that the Act has once come before the House of Lords in a case of some considerable importance, to which I shall have to revert in due course. Fraser against the Canterbury Diocesan Board of Finance. Number 2, curiously, there had been a previous case between the same parties about a different piece of land. But before I come to that, I would like, if I may, to summarise some points on which, as I understand it, there is no dispute between the parties, and which are effectively common ground. First of all, in Lord Walker's speech in Fraser, it was stressed that reverter is an event, not a process, and must dissolve. We entirely accept. We also accept that the reverter proviso was designed to encourage grants under the Act. Again, that is stated in Fraser, and there's no dispute about it. We do not dispute that if a reverter has happened, there is then no title to sell, at least until 1987. By the same token, we see no room to dispute that a sale under Section 14 puts an end to the possibility of reverter, because the old site is gone, and that is an end to it. Finally, we do not dispute a point made by the respondent in paragraph 22 of that printed case, which is Core Bundle 79, that it is not within the parameters of Section 2 to allow grants of land designed to produce rental income to support a school. It must be a grant for the school, not for the financing of the school. And that derives from a case called Attorney General against Price, which is in the Authorities' Bundle, the relevant passages at 521. So much for the common ground. The 1841 Act is very easily shown to have been not very well thought through, and it is indeed recorded that it passed all its stages in Parliament without debate. The right of reverter in particular can act as an extraordinary windfall in many situations. The simple windfall is that if the site has been built upon and improved over the years, the reverter gets back the value of the buildings and the improvements on the buildings, and not just the value of what he granted. But even more striking is the fact that the right of reverter still operates even if the site was given for full consideration. And that is expressly covered by Section 2. In that case, of course, the reverter gets not only the value of the enhancements to the site, but also a site for which he's already had full consideration. We take no point on this saying to say that this shows that the Act, on its face, betrays a lack of careful thought. The way the decisions have turned over the years show that there is, in fact, a multitude of difficulties that the Act has turned on. The decisions, as I say, culminated in Fraser number 2, and this is perhaps a convenient moment to turn to that. It's the Authorities' Bundle, page 666. My Lords, in this case, the grantor gave a site for a school for particular categories of children. They were the poorer classes essentially, of a particular ecclesiastical district. Over the years, the school began to take pupils from a wider category, and indeed, it was essentially a matter of all comers. It was claimed that that gave rise to a reverter, because it was, in effect, to depart from the terms of the grantor's grant. If it closed when they started taking on all comers, then the reversion would have been time barred. So Canterbury would have been able to claim the value of the site. Eventually, the school closed, and there was no question of Section 14 sale. And the argument was that it was that which was the date of the reverter, in which case no problem arose about time bar. It was held unanimously that the latter was the case. And my Lords, my Lady, I think it's enough for me to read pages 45 to 46 of the, paragraph 45 to 46 of the decision at page 680. And I would start at the second sentence of paragraph 45. Neither Section 2 of the 1841 Act, nor the trustee admits a very clear linguistic analysis. The interrelationship between the statute and the trustee is something I shall return. But some general principles are clear. It is clear that both the statute and the trustee were intended to set up arrangements capable of lasting for a very long time, potentially forever. Both were intended to operate through the medium of a charitable trust. Charity law has for centuries required that a general charitable purpose or intention should be recognised and given effect to, even though some particular directions given by the charity's founder are or become impractical. It is also a well-established principle of trust law that any person determining or divesting an estate must be such that the court can see from the beginning precisely and distinctly upon the happening of what event it was that the preceding vested estate was determined. As Mr. Newgey, or the reverter's, put it in his written submissions, 'reverter is an event, not a process, and if it occurs, it is automatic and irrelevant.' All these considerations suggest that the court should take a broad and practical approach to the question whether a school has, in the words of the third proviso, 'ceased to be used for the purposes in this Act mention', and that it is not simply a coincidence that all the reported cases are concerned with schools which had closed permanently, as I said, my lordships. We'll see no cases where schools have closed for the purposes of Section 14. My Lords, my Lady, I think the only other point I should read to your lordships is at page 50, at paragraph 58.
Mr. McCall, is there a question from Lord Burrows?
Yes, the reference in paragraph 45 to the trustee reminded me that, I'm not sure we've been supplied with the trustee in this case. I just wonder if there's any relevance or anything we should be looking at in relation to that trustee.
My Lords, I apologise, I should have taken your lordships to trustees, which are in the core bundle, and I shall take a moment or two, I'm afraid, to turn them up. They're very simple. There's an affidavit of Hubert Ritson, the first of the respondents. And at page 254, one finds the grant of 1914, which simply reads that Robert Fleming, without any valuable consideration granted, who led the County Council all that piece of land now forming a portion of the playground of the school at Nettlebed, to hold on to and to the use of the County Council and their successors for the purposes of the said Acts, and to be applied as part of the playground of the said school, and for no other purpose whatsoever. Now, that's the first grant, and the second grant is at page 258. And it's slightly more complicated because it excludes certain property adjoining the site. But I think it's enough to read at page 259, where the holding is under the council in fee simple for the purposes of the said Acts, and to be applied as a site for a public elementary school for children of and in the parish of Nettlebed and adjacent parishes, and for the residence of the schoolmaster or schoolmistress of the said school, or for other purposes of the said school, and for no other purposes whatsoever. Such school to be under the management through a draw of the chance. And I don't think I need anything more. So what has a playground, very little of that was part of the sale. The main part of the sale was the 1928 grant. My Lords, I was going to take your lordship, my Lady, to paragraph 58.
Just before you leave paragraph 45, if I may just ask to go back to it, in, there's a citation there of the Clavering case. Would you agree with the editors of McGarry and Wade that the issue in trust law is one of certainty of the concept, not of ease of application?
Certainly, my Lady, yes. But it has to be an event, as Lord Walker has said.
The reverter has to be an event, but not necessarily the events that are in question which give rise to the reverter. The reverter will take effect immediately, that's what the proviso says. But the events which constitute the right, the exercise, the triggering of the right may be uncertain until they're determined by a court.
My Lady, yes, indeed. In the printed case of the appallants, we said that reverter was an event, but the event was the conclusion of circumstances.
That's right. That makes good the McGarry statement, that it's about certainty of concept, not of ease of application.
My Lady, I'm most grateful for that. And certainly, there is at least one case where the circumstances did stretch over some period of time, and there was, in that case, no difficulty about identifying the date of closure, but nonetheless, it shows circumstance leading to an event. Going back to 58, on page 684, there is a reference to the difficulty in Fraser number 1, where the Court of Appeal was, if I may say so with respect, misled by an ambiguity in an unfair judgment. And the, Lord Walker says, 'it is entirely correct that the 1841 does not expressly or impliedly require the grant, either to be for all of those purposes or for the purposes expressed in the very words. The grantor, like any other benefactor of charity, is allowed freedom of choice as to the precise object of his bounty, so long as his stated purpose is within the scope of one or more of the purposes mentioned in Section 2. But if the grantor's stated purposes are narrower and more detailed and elaborate than the statutory purposes, noncompliance with them, in particular by servants of the Church of England connection, will not necessarily result in the cessation of the statutory purposes and the consequential reverter. Reverter after 1987 enacted will occur only if the relevant statutory purpose is no longer being carried out. The first statutory purpose in section two is consistent with holy sect, that is, non-religious education, even if a grantor has made an express declaration the school is to be run as a Church of England school. The third statutory purpose in section two cannot be used to alter the chara, the character of a grant which falls squarely within the first purpose.' So that is simply a statement that, in looking at the reverter provisions, you look at the statutory provisions, not whether the, um, grantor said 'only Church of England professing children shall be able to attend.' My lords, that was a unanimous decision of the House of Lords. Um, there was a short speech by Lord Hoffman, um, who dealt with that same point, uh, paragraph fifty-eight, but I don't think I need to take your lodgiers to it. What we draw from Fraser is the importance of taking a broad and practical approach to the question whether a cessation has occurred. The importance of recognizing the charitable trust which underlies the grant, any such grant, is, um, a charitable donation with a charitable purpose. And we say that the, there is a need to carry that charitable purpose, according to Lord Walker, into effect while one can, regardless of any special conditions imposed by the grantor. And we say that section fourteen presupposes that one of the special conditions imposed by the grantor, which is neither here nor there, is as it were the condition that the school be carried out on a particular piece of land. We say in our case, the charitable trust does endure and should not be treated as if it had failed, when actually section fourteen presupposes the success of the school and the original grant, the success in terms of it having prospered over the years and needing to move to a larger site. Against that background, we would wish to make the following four points of critical importance. As an old act with many obligations, the Act of eighteen forty-one is, we say, a classic case for purposes of construction, wherever there is a possibility of frustration of the legislative purpose. As Lord Walker said in Fraser, in dealing with the, um, precisely the question here in point, has there been an event of reverter? The Act demands a broad and practical approach. So we say, um, a broad and practical approach, or as we would put it, a purposeful approach, must of authority be followed, um, here if it is necessary to avoid frustrating the intention of parliament. That's our first point. Our second point is that the Act must be read so as to keep sections two and section fourteen. Instead, it is wrong to, um, assume that the grantor was encouraged by the Act of, um, the possibility of reverter. The grantor would have known also that there might be a move to a more suitable site. And you cannot, um, construe either section two or section fourteen in isolation from the other. The third point is a development of the second. The Act envisages two possibilities. Failure of a school and the consequential, um, closure. Well, as we would say, a reverter is a natural outcome because it is the case of a limited charitable trust which has failed. We say the other possibility envisaged by the Act is success and section fourteen powers to move to a better site. So there is this dichotomy between failure, where reverter, we say, is natural, and success, where we say failure is unthinkable. In this sense, it's unthinkable because it would presuppose, um, that the trust was carrying on in the new site, but the value of the original trust property had been removed from under the trust. My lords, my lady, the, um, fourth fight we would make is in fact, again, echoing words I've already, um, uttered. The grant presupposes the creation of a charitable trust. And we say that such a trust must be given effect to so long as the charitable purpose remains. We say that here, the charitable trust has at all times been to provide a school for the children of Nettle, whether on the site granted or after a section fourteen sale or exchange. And on that basis, we say its purpose remains and it will be remarkable to find that the grantor's trust endures without its property. My lords, I ought now to turn to, um, purposes of construction. But the principles of purposes of construction, we have sought to set out at the core bundle, um, pages fifty-eight, fifty-nine in our printed case. And, my lords, um, we have, um, cited Lord Diplock in Carsham Bradner, which in a sense was, um, the first pointer. Then Lord Stane in the Attentative Reference Number Five in two thousand and five. No explanation for resorting to a purpose of construction is necessary. Um, one can confidently assume that Parliament intends its legislation to be insubstantial, not in the way of a black letter lawyer, but in a meaningful and purposeful way. Then we refer to, um, two judgments in which my Lord Lord Sales was concerned. One, as the member of the unanimous Court of Appeal, and that's Reed Andrews. And, um, the other, at first instance, in Edwards and Warkton, which was a case about Smithfield Market, which I think is even earlier in the Act in this case. The, um, in the ex parte Andrews, the court approved what my Lord Lord Sales had said in Smithfield, that the eighteen sixty Act is a Victorian statute enacted before the creation of the Office of Parliamentary Council in eighteen sixty-nine, which is not as drafted with the precision and clarity which has come to the effect of statute drafting since then. And, um, in Andrews, the court presumed that Parliament did not intend the legislate so as to produce a result which makes no sense or is a nominal or illogical. We say that, um, these principles are particularly relevant and sensible.
Sorry, Mr McCall, it, it was really just a, a point of information to draw the party's attention to the fact that this court, the judgment by myself and Lord Burrows, approved the, or applied the Andrews approach to, uh, an old statute. Uh, I'll give you the reference, just so you have it. It's a case called E W Logistics, twenty twenty-one, U K S C four, and it's paragraph eighty in that judgment. But, but it doesn't add to Andrews, it's just a, uh, a, a reference to an application of it.
Well, I'm very much obliged, my lord. On that footing, I'm not sure that I need to take any more time on what I've stated, um, in our printed case. There is one correction I should make at paragraph twenty, where I've said that the, um, Law Commission report says that the Act of eighteen forty-one passed all its stages in Brinkhouse Farm within, within one day. Whether, the report also comments, 'The reverter provisor shows some signs of not having been wholly drafted by conveyancer in these circumstances, not surprising to find that problems have emerged.' All I would say is that I think I was wrong to say they passed in one day. I think it's simply they all passed without debate. So we say, my lords, and I'm grateful to my Lord Sales for the indication that the Supreme Court has also confirmed this. The principles are very well established now. And, um, even tax law has of course caught up with the recognition that, um, a preconceived scheme with a beginning and an end may well need to be seen for what it is. We say that the intent of Parliament is not to be frustrated by allowing words of strict construction if they can be read in an alternative way which achieves the purposes of the Act. In the light of this, I say that a broad and practical purpose of construction is necessary. And the Law Commission paper to which I shall turn at due course makes no bones about the fact that the traditional reading of the provisor does indeed frustrate the purposes of the Act when said, for the purposes of moving to a better site under section fourteen. The Law Commission's report was, of course, at a time when there was still much to be learnt about the scope for purposes of construction. And it seems to have assumed a literal reading. That, as we say, by the by, what is not is the analysis of how Parliament's intent would be frustrated. And as appears from the, um, the Working Party's report, the need for artificial devices to use to avoid the, the parliamentary intent being frustrated. So we reiterate that this Act demands a purpose of reading. The second point we move on to is the need to read the Act with due regard to both sections two and section fourteen. And the first point I would make is that we do say that until nineteen eighty-seven, the most likely reading of the Act was that, in the case of sale with vacant possession, one simply could not, um, exercise the section fourteen power because there would always have been a closure before the sale took effect. So there would always have been no title to make over to the purchaser. So until nineteen eighty-seven, we say section fourteen was virtually a dead letter. And, um, if the respondent's right, that is to say, it's virtually a dead letter. That, we say, shows the importance of not giving effect to the words strictly on a black letter approach. Sections two and section fourteen both indicate purposes of Parliament. One, to facilitate the grant in the first place. The other, to facilitate the move of the school to a more suitable site. We say that if the reading of sections fourteen and two gives rise to an impossibility of exercising the section fourteen power, then indeed the parliamentary intention has been frustrated. The, um, objects and purposes of the Act were plainly to encourage grants of up to an acre for schools for the poor. And we don't accept that, and it's a point made by my friend in his printed case. But we say that the Act envisaged the scope for the school to move to other more suitable purposes. And it would have been a matter of the school itself moving rather than the school being overtaken by another institution. For that purpose, we say that, um, the reverter was entirely sensible on the cessation of the purposes of the grant. If the grant was not followed by a section fourteen sale. Um, my lord, I've said that, um, the purposes of the reverter are to encourage. There is an argument on the face of the, um, Law Commission's report, I'm not sure around which it is, that, um, section two was also designed to, um, make sure that land wasn't sterilized by the possibility of a school failing, the lack of pupils and lack of money. And the trustees of the school being left in possession of something they couldn't pay for, which gradually dilapidated and, um, had no further purpose. But I don't think anything turns on that today.
Mr McCall, isn't it also possible that the purpose of the series of Acts that we have, dealing with school sites, was to get over all the difficulties of property law, like the law of perpetuities and determinable fees, and make it clear and certain, provide a form whereby the donor could simply use the form and be assured of his right of reversion under section two. And it was a, it, it's, it's partly, it's for that purpose, not, it's to simplify the law, modernize it in eighteen forty-one terms. Not simply, um, a, it's not simply the proposition to facilitate donations, that's the end objective. But there were property law difficulties which prevented the benefactions taking place easily.
My lady, I entirely accept. Um, there was indeed much law of, um, a nature which is now hopelessly unfamiliar to, um, those of my generation, generation. One needs, I think, um, Sir Robert McGarry to, um, explain the history of it. But your ladyship is entirely right that this was too simple. Now, um, we say that the power of section fourteen did envisage the continuation of the grantor's charitable trust of the site. And your lodgiers will have seen that, in this case, there weren't really charitable trusts declared as such. There were purposes, that as Lord Walker made plain in Fraser, the purposes presupposed a charitable intent. And section fourteen presupposes that that intent did take the form of a trust of some form. We say it would be absurd to say that the trust continues under section fourteen, that nonetheless there would be a reverter. Just because the operation follows the natural course of creating new school premises, moving the children across, closing the old site and selling their art, that is really the only practical way of selling a site for the purposes of moving children to a new site. And we say it would be quite absurd to find that that could not be achieved.
Mr McCall, there's a question from Lord Burrows.
Uh, thank you, yes. Um, you've made a point, and I, I may have missed this, uh, but I think you've said it twice, that, uh, there was a problem with regard to a sale with vacant possession until nineteen eighty-seven. Uh, and the reverter, uh, uh, site, or whatever that, uh, nineteen eighty-seven that was called, uh, has changed that. Now, can you just explain that to me?
Indeed, my lord. I apologize for, um, skimping on that. It's in the authorities' bundle and it's a page, um, the Act starts at page, um, four eight four, that the relevant provision is section six, at, um, four nine one. And section two is the importance, subsection two is the importance of section. It is hereby declared that the power conferred by section fourteen, bar of sale etc. is exercisable at any time in relation to land in relation to which, but for the exercise of the power, trust might subsequently arise under section one, which is the new provision saying that revertees take away a trust along by way of a transfer of legal title. So that is to say that, um, the mere fact that the title might come to an end in certain circumstances doesn't prevent it being sold. But B, that the exercise of that power, the exercise of the power conferred, um, by section fourteen in respect of any land, prevent any trust from arising under prevent any trust from arising under section one in relation to that land or any land representing the proceeds of sale of that land. And we say the difference between the law after nineteen eighty seven and before nineteen eighty seven is that before nineteen eighty seven, the reverter took effect before the sale. And we say that must mean the completion of the sale when title passed. Whereas section six makes it comparatively plain that the relevant matter is the exercise of the power of sale by contract. I don't know whether that assists your lordship. But that is our reading of the eighty seven Act.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr McCall, if I could butt in before you you defined the trust here in a binary sense. That is either failure of the school and consequential closure or success and moving to a better site. And I was just wondering, what is the intermediate position? That is, a need for rationalisation of the school estate so that one has amalgamation of schools rather than, the school isn't a failure nor is it a success, but there is a powerful need for rationalisation. That's the first point. The second was that you also defined the trust as to provide a school for the children of Nettlebed rather than in Nettlebed. And I was wondering whether you could help in relation to both of those points.
My lord, I don't think I can help in relation to the second point. I think I would say that the land owner was looking at the Nettlebed district. And it probably wasn't just the immediate parish boundary, as it were, but it was the children who needed schooling at Nettlebed. The first point, my lord. Amalgamation does raise quite a difficult point which has not been considered in the Act, in any cases on the Act. It is, according to the Law Commission, not the case that you can have a section fourteen sale to create a new institution. And I suppose the amalgamation would have to be, to come within section fourteen, would have to be so arranged that the old school in effect took over the school with which it was to be amalgamated.
Thank you very much.
All the Charity Commission would exercise powers to seek prey, make a scheme?
Indeed, my lady. After nineteen eighty seven, there were powers to make a seek prey scheme. Before nineteen eighty seven, it was open to question whether there was a seek prey opportunity because the trust was determinable. And I believe Charity Commission originally started making schemes, but then later decided that they couldn't do so.
Right. Could I just ask you to go back to section six two in the nineteen eighty seven Act? I'm not sure I clearly followed what you were saying to Lord Burrows. And could you just give me the explanation again of what you say six two A means?
Six two A means, my lady, that it isn't right to say, oh, well, this title could come to an end on a reverter, therefore how can it be sold? There was an assumption until nineteen eighty seven that there was no question about avoiding a sale just because there could be a reverter. But for clarification, and your lady will see this heading of section six, clarification of status of land before a reverter. For clarification, it was said that the mere possibility of a reverter did not stand in the way of the sale.
Thank you.
I hope that answers your questions.
Thank you.
My lords, my lady, we say that the language of section fourteen is really consistent only with there being a seamless transition from old school to new school. And as I've said, the grantor named section fourteen was there, would have been making his trust on the footing that, yes, indeed, it would come back to him if the school failed. It would, if it moved to a more suitable site, to use the words of the section, it would remain the same school and would remain within the ambit of his trust. My lords, my lady, seeking now to turn to the duality of the Act, and perhaps there's no need to dwell on this in the light of my lord Lord Stephen's question. We do say that in the nineteenth century, there was a real possibility that communities would fail and the population of a rural community would move to the town. And therefore, a school would simply no longer be needed. There was also a real possibility of a community growing and the school needing further facilities. We say the Act by section two of the provisor on reverter and section fourteen had in mind both these possibilities. The case of success, we say, is something which would lead very few grantors to say, well, I want it all back if it succeeds. The grantor starts out trying to set up a school. And we would submit that if the school succeeds, then the grantor would breast high with the project and would wish to see his gift carried into effect on the new site and would not be asking back his original value. Or indeed, I should say, his original value amplified by any buildings on the site. We submit that calling back the value of the site by a reverter just when it is needed to fund the new site is inconsistent with the evident purpose of Parliament. And our fourth point is that that approach, we say, precisely mirrors the language of the Act. And perhaps I can go back to section fourteen. Page, or sorry, the bundle, page four seven six. Where the trustees are given power to sell or exchange. And about six lines down, your lordship, my lady will see the word, for other land or building suitable to the purposes of their trust. We say their trust is the trust which the grantor imposed on them by creating an educational purpose. And again, you see all end further off. For whilst the improvement of other premises used or to be used for the purposes such trust. Again, a concept that the trust is carrying on. Curiously, those words used or to be used, it's hard to know whether they were put in deliberately. But if they were put in deliberately, they show that the draftsman had in mind the possibility that the new site would already be in use by the time the old site was sold. I don't think much turns on that, but it is an indication that the the natural progression of new site being developed, movement of the pupils, old site being sold, does fit the language of section fourteen.
But those words help you, don't they, Mr McCall?
I think they do, my lady. Yes, they show that the transaction could indeed be aimed at a circumstance where sale takes place after the new school has started. And we say the sale would, in those circumstances, be effectively supporting the new school. I shouldn't say the new school, the new site, indeed, my lord.
Mr McCall, I'm just. Absolutely certainly, I understand you correctly. Suitable to the purposes of their trust would be the trust imposed by the grantor law, not the statutory trust, is it?
According to Lord Walker. And the statutory trust, of course, goes wider than in some cases, such as the Fraser number two case. Though I think in this particular case, there's no real difficulty, there's no real distinction between the trusts of the second parcel of land and the trust of the statute. The second parcel of the land had reference to the purposes of the school. And it was fairly broad. The first parcel was, of course, just for a school playing ground. But this first parcel was hardly touched by the sale.
I was just thinking, sorry, and I missed the first part of your answer. I'm terribly sorry. For the purposes of their trust, is that the statutory trust? Or is it the actual trust that the grantor sets up?
I would say it was the statutory trust, in the light of Lord Walker's comments.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
My lords, I think I now turn to the question how the purpose of construction would aid my argument. And how a purpose of construction would work in the context of this Act. We say that section two, in referring to the land ceasing to be used for the purposes in this Act mentioned, should in the light of section fourteen and the references to the purposes of the trust be read as meaning something along the lines of ceasing to be used for or in furtherance of the grantor's chosen statutory purposes. We say that or can, without any violence to the words, be read as comprising in furtherance of. And if that avoids the frustration of Parliament's intention, we say it is an entirely appropriate reading of the section. We say that when you look at section two and section fourteen, the land granted is indeed to be used in furtherance of the provision of a site. And the site may have to move to a new, more suitable site. So is the grant being used for a site for a village school? We say yes. But if that is wrong, we say it's a quasi literal approach. And we invite your lordships to say that it is entirely appropriate to a statute in this form. If that is wrong, we say that the construction can readily assume a purpose of form on the basis that land does not cease to be used for the purposes of the, for the statutory purposes where there is a single preordained plan of campaign to replace the old site by a new site. And the sale involves closure. But that closure is just a step on the way to completing the move by repaying the borrowing which funded the original purchase of site two. We say that single preordained, or I shouldn't say preordained, I should say preconceived plan of campaign is a perfectly reasonable concept to apply to section two and section fourteen to avoid the frustration of the intention of Parliament. That was very much the approach of the Deputy Judge, Mr Richard Spelman, with counsel. And we say it was right. We say it doesn't really matter whether your lordship, my lady, followed the route of in furtherance of or the route of a preconceived scheme. Because either way, what you're doing is looking at that which is envisaged by the Act as a way of moving the school into more suitable premises. It does further the purposes of the grant. It does achieve the more suitable site. And it does so as a case of beginning and end with steps inserted in the middle. My lords, I'm not going to take your lordships to the complicated cases about preordainment. And that's why I corrected myself when I said preordained, not preconceived. There is no question that this was all preordained because the parts hadn't been farmed when the new school was built. But we say that preconceived is a perfectly reasonable approach to section fourteen. And we say that that does indeed give effect to Lord Walker's concern that the charitable trust should be carried on and that the site should change. As part of what, that cessation of the use of the site should be given a broad and practical meaning. The charitable trust should not be broken, we say, just because the grantor specified site one and you then have to move to site two because it's more suitable. And if the charitable trust is to carry on, then it would be wrong to attribute to the the transaction a break in the middle.
By preconceived, so sorry, by preconceived, do you mean that it has been deemed advisable to sell or exchange the site for any other more convenient or eligible site in terms of section fourteen?
It's been preconceived and that the purchase monies will be applied by the County Council in repaying the borrowing needed for the first step in the transaction. And that is apparent from the facts as stated in the agreed statement of facts listed. My lords, my lady, I, in our printed case, raised one question to which the answer has now been provided. But I think it is helpful. We raised the question of what happened when a school was burnt down, as all too often seems to happen. And overnight, the pupils had to move out. And it probably took several years for a decision to be made whether to rebuild or to move to another site. We submitted that on my land and friends case, you would have to look for a reverter on the date when the school ceased to be used. My lords, in the bundle of authorities, there is a case which I did not refer to and I should have done in my printed case. That is the unreported case of Chavas, which is to be found at. I'm so sorry, I'm sorry. I've got it down as six oh nine. I've got it down as six oh nine in the bundle. It starts at five nine seven. This was an unreported judgment of Mr Justice Harmon. And it concerned a school which had been bombed during the Second World War. And if I can take your lordships to page six oh nine, where his lordship deals precisely with the point in S zero. Um, it is said that, if your lordships have it at page five six oh nine, um, and it's about nine eleven, I think. It is said that directed upon the town, the school became unusable. There was a reverter because the school had ceased to be used for those purposes. So it had in a sense ceased to be used for those purposes, but the words cannot mean, in my judgment, a mere stopping of the user. Supposing, for instance, there was a fire and it was burned down in peacetime. It could not, in my judgment, be argued that the right of reverter arose because it took two years or whatever it was to rebuild the school. Yeah, so it appears the intention had been to rebuild because the cost of work was, so to speak, in the off and would have been affected at any cost. The cessation of the user was brought about by entirely different events, namely by the corporation's plan to reorientate and replace the population of the city and to use their powers compulsory to acquire the site. In my judgment, there is no evidence at all with any Parliament's intention to abandon this site as a place for church and English school at any rate before the order made in December forty sixth for the compulsory acquisition of the land. Whether it was made then or whether it was made rather later does not matter. The reverter had not occurred, in my view, until the manager's project for using the site for school purposes must necessarily be taken to have been abandoned. Now, my lord, that answers the questions I put in my printed case about what happened to the school burnt down. But it answers it, we say, in a way which is favorable to our case. It shows that the cessation happens when you give up the intent to use the land for rebuilding or, as we would say it, for the move to another site. So there is still an event and it is an event which follows on from circumstances to use the phrase I used in answer to a question from my lady Al. My lords, I felt it right to take your lordships to that to correct what I suspect is an erroneous passage in our stated case. But as I say, we submit that it helps us rather than hinders. In particular, it answers the objection that if we're right, a reverter could mean a process rather than a, an event. We say that this case shows the event and the event is clear cut. It is the process that is one of some difference. Um, my lords, I noticed the time. I don't know whether that would be a convenient length.
Yes, it was.
I don't know much about.
We'll, we'll take five minutes now. Thank you, Mr McCall. Mr McCall, I think Lord Burrows has a question for you.
Yes, I, I, I'm sorry to, to come back to this point. I'm afraid it is still troubling me. We, we have here on these facts, a sale with vacant possession. And your argument is that that is perfectly permissible under our interpretation, under the interpretative interpretation of the relevant sections of the eighteen forty one act. And I understand that. But if we've been sitting here in nineteen eighty six, the position surely would be, you'd be making exactly the same argument, wouldn't you? And I'm therefore still troubled by your apparent submission that something happened by reason of the nineteen eighty seven act that makes your submissions otherwise untenable. Am I, am I missing your submission?
No, my lord, I, I'm sorry, I haven't made myself clear. Um, what happened in nineteen eighty seven was that the power of sale was made, the exercise of the power of sale, I contract, was made the day after which cessation did not matter. Before nineteen eighty seven, cessation mattered if it was before the sale. And we would say that before nineteen eighty seven, my learned friend is in difficulties in the sense that it was almost impossible to see how a sale could be made because closure would have to precede the actual selling of the school.
Well, I, I would like to say that I share Lord Burrows's difficulty on this because if you're right on purpose of construction, it was true construction from eighteen forty one, not from nineteen eighty six. I know the act was amended several times. But if you're right, that the cessation in the reverter proviso is cessation under, subject to the act, meaning any provision of the act, including section fourteen. And if when we go to section fourteen, you can have a sale in substitution, in order to have a substitution of new premises for old, a sale or exchange for new premises, then the cessation, reverter proviso will work before nineteen eighty six as well as after. If you're right on that, and I obviously have to consider that.
My lady, I think I would simply say that my learned friend approaches this black letter. I approach it purposely. And I entirely accept that if it had been a case of pre nineteen eighty six argument and the ideas of purpose of construction had reached the level at which they now stand, there would have been no difficulty. My lord, I hope that answers your ladyship's question.
Mr McCall, your submission is made on the hypothesis that the respondents are right.
Yes, indeed.
Yes.
Yes. I say it's a strong argument against black line, a black letter construction.
But it's equally, so if, if the purpose of construction is there, it was there for the life of the legislation. And obviously, the case law and purpose of interpretation is deemed to have retrospective effect. We can say that the judge in eighteen forty two, looking at the act, would have come to the same conclusion.
My lady, yes. And we would say that the judge in eighteen forty two would have said, let nothing frustrate the parliamentary intention in introducing section fourteen in parallel with section two.
Yes, so it's ceasing to be, it's not ceasing to be used for the purposes of the act as required by the proviso to section two on your submission if it's being used for the purposes of section fourteen, because that's part of the act.
My lady, yes.
And then when we get to section fourteen, it's talking about substitution or exchange for other land. Sorry, sale or exchange for other land. Sale or exchange in substitution for other land.
My lady, yes, I'm saying in substitution for other land as part of a scheme which ensures the purchase of the other land is valid.
The drafter of section fourteen has thought about that because he requires it to be a condition that it shall be deemed advisable to sell or exchange the same for any other more convenient or eligible site, the protection to the day nor.
My lady, I would like to say that I lost.
In section fourteen, in section fourteen, line three, line two to three, have I got the wrong version of section fourteen?
No, I didn't.
It seems advisable to sell or exchange the same.
Yes, my lady.
So that's, that's the protection for the day nor.
That's the protection for the day nor.
That's right. And that's what makes this a plan to substitute new premises, which are more expedient, more convenient, sorry, or eligible.
My lady, yes.
Thank you.
Um. I'm conscious of the time, my lords, my lady. I think that it is necessary for me now to deal with the judgment in the Court of Appeal, which we say it was a single judgment given by Lord Patton with which the other members, Lord Justice Patton, with which the other members of the court agreed. My lords, the judgment starts at page ninety four of the core bundle. And we say that if you go right to the end at page one hundred and ten, you see the heart of Lord Justice Patton's reasoning. The judge's approach to this question of cessation of use as set out in paragraph sixty two of his judgment was to say that the old site was being sold to raise money to pay for part of the cost of the new buildings. And the old site was therefore being used for the purposes of the public elementary school. But that is not the statute question. It is to do with whether the land continued to be used as a site for the school or for educational purposes, not whether it provides the means of reimbursing the county council or its expenditure on the new school. Expenditure on the improvement of other purposes used for the purposes of the new, of the trust is a permissible use of the proceeds from the sale of the existing property, the school site under section fourteen. But that power is only exercisable up to the management and the land ceases to be used for those statutory purposes. Despite Mr Thomas's submissions to the contrary, I am unable to accept that by keeping the old site vacant pending a sale, the county council continued either to use the land as a site for a school or to use it for educational purposes. Both require the active use of the land for the education of children. I would accept that this could include ancillary activities, such as the use of the site as a playground or for meals. But in this case, the old site remained vacant with no further possible use for educational purposes. Now, my lords, what we say about that is that Lord Justice Patton was really answering the wrong question when he concentrated on active use. That is not what section says. And though it might be a reasonable approach in the absence of section fourteen, we say it fails in essence to take section fourteen into context. It is necessary to meld sections two and section fourteen. And it is right, we say, to consider the use of the site, that's to say, the old site, for the purposes of reciting as being entirely within the purposes of the act. The truth goes on. And the old school is still being used for the purposes of that trust, namely providing a newer school site. Um, my lords, we also say that Lord Justice Patton did, in a sense, betray his own reasoning by adopting a purpose of really elsewhere, but not in relation to this particular provision. We invite your lordships to look at our printed case at the core bundle, page sixty five. In paragraph thirty, we say, Lord Justice Patton did, in paragraph eleven, and at the end of paragraph twenty, his judgment, make clear that he accepted that at least in some respects, the eighteen forty one act must be read twice. He accepted that the fact that the new school may have to be brought into existence before the old one can be sold produces a difficulty about timing, but said that the difficulty could be accommodated within section fourteen by treating the reference to the application of the proceeds of sale in the purchase of another site as including the use of that money to reimburse the trustees or the local expenditure or educational authority for the expenditure of the new school which they have already incurred. He was clearly right to say this, section fourteen, by using the phrase used or to be used. Roughly referenced the possibility that the new site might already be, at the time of the sale, being used as a school. But treating a phrase as having a particular meaning to make sense of the statute is, of course, simply to give it a purpose of construction. In the light of Lord Walker's statements, Patton, Lord Justice Patton was right to accept the proviso that indeed, in the case he enlists, for a purpose of approach to its interpretation, that it cannot be right to adopt a purpose of approach to the construction of the statute in one of the circumstances, a literal one in another closely related issue. So we say that there was, in fact, a failure to grapple with the auditor. If his construction be right, you end up with what statute envisaged of continuing trust but deprived of its property. My lords, we say the error is to disregard the function of section fourteen to counterbalance section two. Section fourteen allows the same school to be moved to a new site and thereafter to continue on the same trust for that same school. We say you cannot introduce a reverter where the trust continues in operation. My lords, my lady, I've said that the judge at first instance took a purpose of construction. He didn't in fact go into the details of purpose of of interpretation. What we say he did was simply to recognise for what it is, the overriding plan of campaign from day one, the building of the new school, to day two, the repaying of the borrowing that made that new school possible. I'm falling into where I have I saying new school, the new site or the old school. My lords, I would wish, given the time, to take your lordships to the deputy judge's judgment rather than to read your lordships certain passages in the Law Commission report, which are, in my submission, highly relevant. And the Law Commission's report is to be found in the authorities' bundle. And I would like to pick it up at page seven hundred and forty five, where there's a brief passage about the purposes of the act. I'm sorry, the history there. My lords, I'm very conscious with a report of this great length and great scholarship, there are enormous danger in picking out little pieces here and there. But I think I have no option but to do that. Port of my arguments, I'd start, if I may, at paragraph seven on page seven four five. As will appear in the course of this report, the school sites act eighteen forty one suffers from serious weaknesses in its draft. They refer to other statutes concerned. In practice, however, most of the problems have arisen in relation to schools, largely due to the Education Act nineteen forty four and the restructuring. and the restructuring of the education system thereby affected. I needn't read the rest of that paragraph. The passage of time has also increased the difficulties and costs of interpreting the reverter provisions and carrying them into effect. The ascertainment of the person now entitled to a reverted site involves tracing title from the date of the original grant from the trustees. So the history of settlement, the destination of a school deceased persons, and perhaps the title to neighboring land may fall to be investigated over a period of a hundred years or more. The problems naturally arise only if and when the building erected on the affected site ceases to be used as a school, or as the case may be. There is little evidence that the reverter provisions gave rise to many cases before nineteen fourteen, though the books do include a few more relating to schools, which were the most prone to closing down for lack of funds. But since the end of the fast war, a number of factors have led to closure or transfer to new sites, mainly voluntary schools, and to the closure of churches. This report also dealt with reverters in relation to churches. The process is likely to continue for some time, because of the uncertainties in the legislation. The trustees are often faced with worries over their possible continuing liability to preserve the buildings in a safe condition, and they do not know whether or how they can dispose of the property or what should be done with the proceeds. In the result, there is a risk that sites may in effect become thorough. Nobody knows how many sites are now affected by these acts. But those of us who are in the best positions, judge, estimate that the number of voluntary schools within the Act and still on our original sites exceeds two thousand. That, of course, was in nineteen eighty-one. My lords, my lady, I was going to move on to paragraph twenty-one at page seven hundred and fifty, where the working party observed, by way of introduction, that the reverter proviso contained in section two chose some signs of not having been wholly dropped by the converter. I don't think I need to read the rest of it. Then, paragraph one, then question one, paragraph twenty-two. The eighteen forty-one Act provides for the reverter to take effect immediately upon the sassa of the relevant charter for use. Going on to paragraph three. Sassa of use is a pure question of fact, but there may well be room for argument as to what constitutes sassa. Plainly, the eighteen forty-one Act, for example, does not envisage the reverter of the site simply because the school has closed for holidays or to enable repairs to be carried out. And he refers to, they refer to, re-shabas, or lordships of seed. I think I can then go on to paragraph twenty-four. The point of time at which reverter takes effect will thus, in some cases, be a debatable question of fact. Twenty-five. Although intentional or enforced permanent discontinuance of the authorised use must, we think, amount to sassa within the statutes, we consider that it would not be safe for trustees to rely on any glasa discontinuance, not constituting sassa. That is supposed that a non-resident schoolteacher is appointed, so that the teacher's house is not in fact used as such. The trustees do not at that time know whether they will need the house for schoolteachers on future days. And as an interim measure, the house is net, though certainly near-intentional or enforced permanent discontinuance. Nevertheless, it seems to us that it would be open to the Court to find that the authorised use had ceased, indeed that the Court might also find, if it appeared, that resumption of the authorised use in the future would have liked or for letting was for a substantial period. Nothing else tells on the rest of that paragraph. My lords, can I turn now to paragraph forty-three on page seven five seven, which is an important passage because it confirms the understanding of the working party that what section fourteen does is move the school, not change the institution. The power of sale under section fourteen is exercisable only in order to enable the trustees to move the school. It does not allow the trustees to close the school as an institution. In the middle of the nineteenth century, the population was increasing, and it was readily foreseeable that a school might outgrow its premises. Section fourteen recognises not only that the site originally granted, which was by the statute limited in extent, might become too small, but also that there might not be available any adjacent land on which it could expand. The limited power of sale contained in section fourteen was an almost essential feature of the eighteen forty-one Act, if the general policy of the Act was not to be frustrated. By the same token, we believe that grantors would not have regarded the grant of the original site as an end in itself, but it has a means to an end, namely, the establishment of a school. And consistently with that approach, they would not have wished to recall that benefaction simply because their school was success and had to move to larger premises. Of course, it would be quite different if the site ceased to be used for school purposes because their school ceased to exist. And this, we submit, is rather a reflection of what Lord Walker said in phrasing number two, that all the cases seem to revolve around cases of closure. My lords, at page six hundred and six, seven hundred and sixty-seven, there is a brief passage which deals with the audit, which I mentioned, that, really, I think I should read, perhaps enough just to summarise, there's a windfall because you may get the value of property built on your original site, but there's a double windfall if you are one of those who conveyed the site for consideration. So I needn't, I think, take any more out of that. Now, page seven hundred and eighty-two is important because it shows how sales have, in fact, had to be carried out by those who took a cautious view of the literal wording of section two. Can I pick it up at section, a paragraph one hundred and fourteen? There is one further matter for consideration in this context. In order to have the desired effect, a sale under section fourteen has always had to be carried out before the closure of the school. That is because once a reverter has occurred, the trustees have no title, or at least have no beneficial title enabling them to apply the proceeds in furtherance of the proceeds, the purpose of sale, as set out in the section. And I needn't read the next sentence. Not surprisingly, trustees do not always find it easy to affect the sale in time. Quite often, they fail, and the intention behind section fourteen is frustrating. But we understand they sometimes succeed by resorting to devices which cannot be desirable on educational grounds, such as keeping a single class in the old premises after the main move has taken place. My lords, the important point at this stage is, in our submission, this. If an friend is right to take a black letter approach to this section, we say that the result is you can only go through the process of moving to a new school and keeping the value of our old school for the purposes of the new school. You can only do that if you contrive artificial devices which are not desirable on educational grounds and which may well depress the price of the property if you seek to sell the property with a licence to continue to use it for, as they suggest, a single class in the old premises. We say that that is a wholly inappropriate reading, taking the purposes of a school for what they are. There is no educational justification, we say, or a school which has to ferry its pupils across the road to another site just for the sake of avoiding what we say is frustrating language in the statute. We say that that sort of ferrying of schoolchildren from one place to another is indeed, and possibly more so, an avar in present circumstances, where there is so much safety that has to be taken into account. It is educationally undesirable. It's not just cannot be desirable, it's educationally undesirable. My lords, my lady, I think that in the text of the report, that is all I would wish to draw to your attention. It was inevitably a report which produced a multitude of recommendations, I think there were twenty-six in all, and they come at pages seven hundred and eighty-four onwards. And of course, the Reverter of Sites Act nineteen eighty-seven was approved of those labels. But the Reverter of Sites Act didn't adopt the recommendations of the working party as to section fourteen, which one sees at page seven hundred and eighty-six, paragraphs middle twenty-four and twenty-five. Section fourteen of the eighteen forty-one, and not, eighteen forty-one Act, should not be expressed and replaced, but the effect of a sale under section twenty-nine of the settlement should, in corresponding circumstances, be the same. That is to say, it would override an existing right of reverter if the sale were effective for the purposes of facilitating or financing a removal of the educational establishment on the siting question to a new site. Wherever the trustees have obtained a ministerial order to move or equivalent certificate, reverter should be treated as not taking effect earlier than two years from the date of the order. So if you have a situation where the move of the school had been approved by the powers that be, the proposal was that there was a two-year locust penitentiary during which you could sell. That proposal was not adopted, and we don't know. My lords, I say that the fact that it was not adopted is wholly neutral. It doesn't tell us anything about the meaning to be given to the eighteen forty-one Act. So what we take from the Law Commission is the history and the drafting of the Act calls, we say, or a willingness to raise an eyebrow at things which are very strange. And on that basis, a willingness to go for purposes of construction, which the Commission doesn't seem to have considered. If the intention of Parliament is frustrated. The intention of Parliament is frustrated, say, the working party, if you give section fourteen and section two that black letter approach. And finally, if a section fourteen sale is affected, the new school is not in fact a different institution. It is the old school being carried forth. It's not right, we say, the case for purposes of construction is clear. The case for construing section fourteen and two, so is not the frustrate parliamentary intention, is clear. And the attempt to rely on section fourteen is an attempt to recreate the old school, not to replace it with another. And the trust continue, therefore, a reverter to break the trust would be wholly inappropriate. On that basis, we invite your lordships to take a purpose of reading of the statute in one of the two statements which I have mentioned before. Either "for" has meaning for or involvement of, or has including in the transaction, the preconceived transaction which leads from borrowing to purchase the first site, that's right, the new site, to selling to repay the borrowing. And that preconceived scheme, we say, was rightly seen as not giving rise to a sassa by the land judge. We say he was right, and the black letter approach of the Court of Appeal was wrong. My lords, I'm just within my time. I don't know whether I can do that, I just...
Well, Beres, there's a question, eh?
Yes, on either of your preferred formulations, I assume it makes no difference what the length of time is that is taken between the school moving and the sale of the land. It could, on your hypothesis, I think, on either submission, be ten years.
Well, my lords, yes, in theory, but I'm saying that it's a preconceived scheme where you know from day one that the money is destined to be used for repaying the borrowing. I would submit that a ten-year period would actually go to the opposite extreme of using the money for whatever the educational authorities' purposes might be at the time. So I say that it does make a big difference that there's a preconceived timescale for the operation.
I would also like to ask a question, if I may. You have placed a meaning on the word "for" in the reverter proviso in section two, but the word "for" is also material to be considered in section fourteen in the second half, where it talks about sell or exchange the said land or building, or part thereof, for other land or building. The point is made that you don't sell for other land or building. But if the word "for" has one of its meanings, which is in substitution for, you can sell or exchange land or building or any part in substitution, taking a purpose of approach.
Indeed, my lady.
So that's another place where we have to think about the meaning of "for" in the context of the drafting.
Yes, indeed. Section fourteen is very strangely drafted. The idea of a sale for other property doesn't make sense.
No, well, it does. It may do. Surely, our approach would be, it should be, as giving effect to Parliament, to try and see what meaning it does, might have. And one of the meanings of the word "for" is in substitution for.
My lady, yes, that's absolutely correct. I apologise. I would say, I think I was seeking to say, that simply the word "for" in isolation doesn't make very much sense. But your ladyship is entirely right that here you look at it as a matter of practical meaning. How do you sell for other land in substitution? Yes, indeed.
Thank you. Thank you.
My lords, I don't know whether I can have further assistance.
I don't think there are any further questions at this stage, Mr McCall. Thank you very much. Mr Howard.
My lords, my lady, I hope you can hear me.
You can. Thank you.
In this appeal, there is a single question of statutory construction concerning the reverter provision in section two of the Act. And that is, what is the meaning of the phrase in the proviso to section two? Upon the said land so granted as aforesaid ceasing to be used for the purposes in this act mentioned. And the respondent's case, which the Court of Appeal accepted, is as follows. The phrase and the proviso requires one to look at the statutory purpose of the use of the land which the grantor selected in his grant. When we look at section two in a moment, we will see that there are three statutory purposes listed there, which are also involved... which are also involved in section three. Now here, the grantor, Mr. Fleming, directed land to be used as a site for school and its playground. That's the first statutory purpose. Or for a schoolteacher's house. That's the second statutory purpose. So when applying the proviso, the question is, has the land so granted by Mr. Fleming ceased to be used for his selected statutory purpose? I.e. as a site for school, its playground, or a schoolmaster's house? We know on the evidence that in fact the land was never used as a schoolmaster's house. So the question is, has the land ceased to be used as a site for school and its playground? That's a simple test. And applying that test to the facts, the answer here was clearly yes in February two thousand and six. February two thousand and six, the old site of Metalbed School ceased to be used as a site for a school when the school closed permanently on that site. So respondents say, and the Court of Appeal accepted this, that as a matter of ordinary language, the permanent closure of the school on the old site was the event upon which the land granted by Mr. Fleming ceased to be used as a site for purposes in this Act mentioned. I.e. as a site for a school. And therefore, the land thereupon immediately reverted to the grantor under the proviso. That's the case in a nutshell. The court's already been taken to the conveyances. Could I make a couple of points on the conveyances? Lordships, recall that they are in the bundle at two five four and two five eight and two five nine. My lords, the conveyances adopted the model form of grant which was provided for in section ten of the School Sites Act. Copy of the statute in your bundle doesn't include section ten. Your lordships will find that the model grant is set out in the judgment of Lord Walker at paragraph thirty-one, and that's in the authorities' bundle, my lords, at page six seven five of the authorities' bundle. And Lord Walker says, section ten of the eighteen forty-one Act provided an optional form of grant, the habendum of which, with its original parentheses, was as followed. To hold unto and to the use of the said, and his or her heirs, etc., etc., for the purposes of the said Act, which is what we have in our case, and to be applied as a site for a school for poor persons of and in the parish or for the residence of schoolmaster or schoolmistress, or for other purposes, and for no other purpose. So that was the model recommended by the Act, and that was the model which your lordship saw that was adopted in the present case at, we found at two five two and two five eight to nine, which your lordships have seen already. And so, in the present case, the grantor, Mr. Fleming, made clear that he was intending to use the forms described by the Act with the consequences that flow from the Act. And he was choosing, selecting out of the statutory purposes mentioned in section two of the eighteen forty-one Act, the first two of the statutory purposes, namely, for use as a school, site to use as a school for persons, and alternatively, as a schoolmaster's house. I've already explained, the land was never in fact used as a schoolmaster's house. So with that preface, can I turn to the terms of the statute? And your lordships find statute in the authorities' bundle, starting with the title page at four six two. And if I may, I will begin by setting out the proposition on which the respondents rely, and then taking the lordship led through the provisions and explain the basis of the proposition. The proposition is this. Section two facilitates grants of land for functional use as a site for any of the three statutory purposes selected in the grantor's grant. And so, turning to the Reverter provision. The Reverter occurs upon the land ceasing to be used function as a site for the statutory purpose selected in the grant. Can I explain my focus on the use of that word function? Your lordship, my lady, be well aware that in the law of charity, there's a well-recognized distinction between a charity's function property and its property held for the purposes of generating money. It's often described as investment property. Land is functional land where it is held on trusts which stipulate that the land must be occupied and used for carrying out the objects of the charity. By contrast, land is held as investment property for the purpose of generating money, where the land's rents and proceeds of sale are intended to be applied to further the charity's objects. And that distinction runs through the whole law of charity. It was memorably adopted in a famous judgment on charity trustees' investment in the Bishop of Oxford case by Vice-Chancellor Sir Donald Nichols, as he then was, Harry's. But the functional land covers cases like that of the National Trust, which owns historic houses and open spaces for occupation and use, Salvation Army that owns hostels to house the desperate. And by contrast, investment property is property where the property is held by the charity for the purpose of generating money to carry out other purposes. They may be granting. And respondents admit that looking at the School Sites Act, its terms, its title, and its objects, the purpose of the School Sites Act was to facilitate the grant of functional land for use as a site for schools. So turning to the language of the Act itself, we start on the title page, please, at page four six two of the authorities' bundle. Here you see the title, School Sites Act eighteen forty-one.
That's the substituted title. It wasn't the original title.
Oh, I'm grateful, my lady. That I was not aware of.
It was substituted in eighteen ninety-six or thereabouts. That's apparent from the notes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm afraid I didn't pick that up. My lady, going forward, I'm afraid I can't see from my notes what the original title was. There's a reference to it in. I can't hear, my lady, sorry.
Hello? I just wanted to correct you a point of accuracy. It is not the title that appears in the eighteen forty-one Act as originally an act.
No, I'm grateful for that, my lady. I'm afraid my question was, I couldn't see what had originally been there. That's all. So turning to section two, sees that key words are the landlords empowered to convey land to be used as sites for schools. Any person seized in the various ways described there, may grant, convey, or enfranchise by way of gift, sale, or exchange any quantity not exceeding one acre of such land. We submit the key words are as a site for a school for the education of poor persons. That's the first statutory purpose. As a site for a school for the education of poor persons. And then the second statutory purpose, again introduced by the words as a site, as a site for the residence of the schoolmaster or schoolmistress. And then the third statutory purpose is or as a site otherwise for the purposes of the education of such poor persons and in religious and useful knowledge. So our submission is the word as a site controls all three statutory purposes.
Why do you say, Mr. Tauber, that the words as a site must be introduced to qualify the third of those heads?
Well, my lord, it's it's because dramatically as a site for a school, and then for, we submit, the residence of the schoolmaster is also complexed, being preceded by the word as a site. And therefore, consistently with that, the third limb should also be held to be controlled by the words as a site otherwise for the purposes of the education of such poor persons. It's a linguistic point.
Thank you.
So taking the opening words of section two before we get to the provisos, we submit that the purpose was that section two was intended to facilitate grants of land in part to overcome the convincing and technical problems that my lady Lady Arden pointed out earlier. To facilitate grants of land to be used as functional land, not to facilitate the grants of land to be used as investment property. And I will develop that submission later on by reference to the authorities. But to foreshadow what I'm going to say, we submit that it was not the intention, section two, to facilitate, for example, a grant of land on terms that the trustees were to use the rents and profits for the support of a school elsewhere. And we say that is clear from the language of the We then turn, move on to the, what was originally the third proviso. Provided also that upon the said land so granted as aforesaid or any part, ceasing to be used for the purposes in this Act mentioned, the same shall thereupon immediately revert. So the question, well, lordships, my lady, is what does cease to be used for the purposes in this Act mentioned? And the respondent's submission is that it's a reference to the three statutory purposes set out in the opening part of section two. My lords, perhaps instructive, before going any further, to just see what the similar provisions in section three which we have.
Just before you could do that, wouldn't it more naturally have said used for the purposes in this section mentioned? And I have an add-on question which I'd like you to deal with at some point, but not necessarily now. If the proviso operates literally, does it mean that the school was always trespassing on the landowner's property? That's the second question. The first question is, for the purposes in this Act mentioned, must entitle the court to look at all of the Act, not just the section one?
And that was why I was going to take a relationship to section three.
Fine. Thank you.
Dealing with the second point, while it's, so don't forget it, my lady. I do believe that there's any question of trespass taking place after the grant was made. When the grantor grants the land to be used as a site for these purposes as a school, then, in this case, Oxford County Council and any other case, the trustees are using the land in accordance with the grant.
Yes, but the effect of the proviso is retrospective. So it becomes a portion of the grantor's estate and of any manner, et cetera, as fully to all intents and purposes as if the Act had not been passed. And if you enter into the contrary notwithstanding, so that is a rewrite.
My lady, that phrase was construed in a case called Reed-Corsman, which we'll look at later. And the phrase, as if this Act had not been passed, was held by the Court of Appeals, Wilfrid Green, to mean as if the grant had not been made. That was how it was construed in that case.
Still retrospective, then? Well, if there was no title to act under the disposition to the school or to the persons to hold for the purposes of the school. I mean, there may be all sorts of tax implications which we needn't go into, but it does look as if it was intended to be retrospective.
My lady, that's.
On a literal interpretation.
I understand your ladyship's point on the literal interpretation, but it's never been construed in that way in many cases that have been concerned with Reverter, which we'll look at a bit later.
Yes, I see. Thank you.
I take your ladyship's point on the literal. If one goes over the page, page four six four, one finds this is a provision which authorized the Duchy of Lancaster to make grants for same purposes. And the court will see that there isn't the same, my lord, will see.
Sorry. If in fact it's retrospective, then a title runs from the day. then a title runs from the day of the initial grant and your title would be barred.
My lord, yes, and that's, that's never been the way the act's been interpreted, it's been treated as operating from the date of the possessor. That's the way when, when time begins to run for the purposes of the rules of adverse possession.
And does that mean that one has to use a purposeful interpretation of the act to avoid such an illogical conclusion?
It certainly means one has to adopt a broad and practical approach to these purposes.
Yeah.
As we saw from the case of Ri Shavat, if the school closes for the night, that doesn't mean that's a cesser of use that are in the sense used in the proviso.
But let me be absolutely clear about it. If, if, if a literal approach was taken and it was retrospective, you would have no title because a title would have been run against you. So you have to adopt a broad and practical approach, a purposeful approach to that aspect of the act.
My lord, I accept that. And characterization of our approach as being black letter and literal is not we would accept is an accurate characterization of our case. So I was going to change for section three, where one sees that there's a power for Duchy to, picking up off of that separate lines, to grant, convey, or enfranchise to or in favour of trustees and existent schools any lands and hereditums to be used by them for the purposes of this act, without spelling them out. And we say this match refers back to what one finds in section two of the act. I will check over the adjournment, but section four, which is unfortunately not in this bundle, that I think contains something similar, but we will look at that over the adjournment to see whether I can take that point any further, particularly on the question of for the purposes of this act. So going back to section two, that we say, respondents say the focus in the open part is on the grant facilitating grants of land for actual functional use as a school. The focus is on how a site and therefore when one comes to the reverter, one has to ask whether the actual use of the land as a site for the grantor's selected statutory purposes has come to an end. And to repeat, we say it's a simple test of this. One looks at the actual use of the transferred land and asks, is the land still being used as a site for a school or has it ceased to be used as a site for a school? And by February two thousand and six, when Nettlebed School had moved away from the old site granted by Mr. Flynn, any bystander would have said, no, the site is no longer being used for that statutory purpose. And we say that that approach is the one that has been adopted for over a century in relation to the construction of the act. And one finds it, first of all, in the case of Attorney General Chadwell, nineteen ten, one Chancellor in nineteen two, which is at five three one of the authorities. And if I can start with the headline, we say summarizes the case the ratio. The expression ceasing to be used for the purposes in this act mentioned in the reverter clause contained in section two of the School Sites Act means ceasing to be used for such of the purposes in this act mentioned as are specified in the deed of grant. My lords, in this case, what happened was that there was a deed of grant in eighteen sixty-eight, conveying the land under the section two of the School Sites Act for the first statutory purpose, that's to say, to permit the site to be used for a school, but not for the second or third statutory purposes. In particular, not for the third statutory purpose, which would have included a Sunday school. The school that was erected on the land was closed in nineteen oh seven as a public elementary school, but it continued to be used as a Sunday school, as one sees towards the latter part of the headline. And the original grantor then claimed that the premises had reverted to him under the act. But the Board of Education contended on the basis that the land is still being used as a Sunday school, that it's possible to have a speed. And Mr. Justice Warrington rejected the Board of Education's argument and held that inasmuch as the school had ceased to be used for the purposes specified in the deed it had reverted to the estate of the day nor although it had been continuously used for other purposes specified in the act. And one can see the ratio set out page five three seven in the bundle or page ninety-eight of the authority itself. In the seventh line from bottom, the act specifies three purposes for which land may be granted. First, a school for the education of poor persons, secondly, for the residence of the schoolmaster or schoolmistress, and thirdly, otherwise for the purposes of the education of such poor persons in religious and useful knowledge. The grantor may select his own purpose from amongst those three. The operation of the act is to give force and effect to his grant, even if he only led the load. Can it be the true construction of the land, that though the land ceases to be used for the purposes expressed in the grant, yet nevertheless, if it is used for one or more of the other purposes in the act mentioned, the reverter will not take place? I cannot take this view. I think you must read the purposes in this act mentioned as meaning such of those purposes are applicable to the case in question, namely the purposes to which the land was devoted by the grantor. Now, to what purpose was the land devoted in the present case? There can, I think, be only one answer to the question. To the purpose of a day school for the education of the poor to be conducted according to the principles in furtherance of the ends of the national society. The mere forwarding of a Sunday school does not fulfill that purpose. So the ratio then is, one looks to see which of the three statutory purposes in section two were selected by the grant and then asks, is the selected purpose still being carried on on the subject? And in the case of Chadwell, once the school closed, the selected statutory purpose had ceased to be carried on and so the land had ceased to be used for the purposes in this act mentioned.
Mr. Justice, can I ask you, how does this fit with the Fraser case? It may be that I read it too quickly, but I thought the point being established in Fraser was that no reverter occurred if the use could continue within any of the three statutory purposes, even if those had been once selected by the grantor?
No, my lord, with respect in Fraser, both Lord Hoffman and Lord Walker approved of the decision in the Attorney General and Chadwell. And they said that one had to identify which of the three statutory purposes the grantor had selected in his grant. And therefore it was necessary to, to see what, which of those three statutory purposes were chosen and if that statutory purpose ceased to be carried on on the site, then the reverter occurred. I was about to come to Fraser, to show you, my lord, where that is at.
Thank you very much.
So can I go to Fraser? And that's at six 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 of the bundle. And the principle, there were two issues in Fraser. One of the friends, McCall, has summarized the first, which was where the statutory purpose selected by the grantor was to provide a site for the education of poor persons. Could it be said that if people other than poor persons were educated in the school, the statutory purpose, the land ceased to be used in statutory purposes? And it was held no. But the House of Lords also dealt with a second issue, which is really about the Chadwell point, and asked the question, is it if there is a cessation of use in court into the precise terms of the grant? So that, for example, if it said the land shall be used as a school, but in accordance with Church of England principles, if Church of England principles cease to be part of the school's tenets, would that lead to a cesser of the user for the statutory purposes? And it was held no. It was held that one looked at the statutory purpose, the first statutory purposes, use of the site as a school for poor persons and the breach of the super added requirement that should be in accordance with Church of England policy didn't lead to a reverter under section, the proviso to section two. But if I may, I will just make good the submission that I was making to my lord's sails. If one goes to page six seven one on the speech of Lord Hoffman, and paragraph thirteen, he dealt with the point I just mentioned. The first question raised by this appeal is the meaning of the words upon the said land ceasing to be used for the purposes in this act mentioned. Does it mean one of the three purposes mentioned in this act? That is to say, one, the education of poor persons, two, the residence of the schoolmaster or schoolmistress, and three, otherwise for the education of such poor persons in religious and useful knowledge? Or does it mean for the purposes specified in the grant? These had, of course, be within one or more of the three statutory purposes, but could be a good deal narrower. For example, the purpose specified in the deed fell within the statutory category of the education of poor persons, but was narrow in being confined to persons in the Ecclesiastical District of St. Philip's and education in accordance with the principles of the national society. As a matter of language, I should have thought that there was no doubt about the matter. The act says the purposes in this act mentioned. It does not say the purposes in the deed of grant mentioned. The national society, which promoted the eighteen forty-one act, would be well aware of the difference. The standard form of grant specified the purpose of the school was to be education according to the principles of the Church of England. That was the form used in this case. The purpose mentioned in the act was education in general. And that does not mean that the restrictions in the deed could have no effect. They could be enforced in the same way as those in any other charity trust. But a breach of those restrictions would not have the drastic consequence of causing a reverter. The matter is not however free from authority. And then he refers to Attorney General Chadwell, sets up the facts and said, the Board of Education contended there'd be no reverter because although the land is no longer being used for the general education of poor persons, use as a Sunday school provided them with religious and useful knowledge. He refers to the argument of Mr. Cave, who said he was for the success of the grantor. His argument was the reverter occurred if the land ceased to be used for the statutory purpose chosen by the grantor. It did not matter that it was being still used for some other purpose, which he could have chosen, but did not. The provision to reverter means the land is reverted, it ceases to be used for such a purpose of the act as specifying the grant, namely in this case, a first purpose only, in other words, education of poor persons. Mr. Justice Warrington said it inside. And he summarized it what I've already read to you. He then goes on to paragraph eighteen, this case may be regarded as having glossed the statutory language, but it is still without criticism for nearly a century, and I would not cast any doubt. But he then says, does not assist the first of the fact, does not say the purposes in this man, act mentioned means the purpose in the deed mentioned. It says that if the grantor has chosen one of the three statutory purposes and land ceases to be used for the statutory purposes, a reverter is not avoided, it can still be used for one of the other two statutes. My lords, I'm conscious that I've gone over the time. It's gone one o'clock. Will that be a convenient moment?
Yes, of course, we'll we'll resume at two o'clock, Mr. Tauber, thank you very much.
Much love.